Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to our regularly scheduled board meeting. Let's get started. The change of date of this meeting from September 7th was emailed for publication to the Independent Press Bloomfield Life, the township clerk of the township of Bloomfield, and posted on the Bloomfield School District website on August 5th, 2021. The location and time of this regular meeting remains in the media center at Bloomfield High School with an executive session starting at 6:30 p.m. and public session starting at 7:30 p.m. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Ms. Quell, may I please have a roll call?
Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Berger?
Present.
Ms. Dudley?
Ms. Green?
Present.
Mr. Heller?
Present.
Mr. Morse?
Here.
Ms. Linas? Vice President Walker?
Here.
President Fishman?
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Quell. We have a quorum. We're moving on to number two, resolution to go in executive session. Be it resolved, the Bloomfield Board of Education will adjourn and disclose meeting to discuss items which fall in exception of our open meetings policy and permits the board to have private discussion since it deals with specific exceptions contained in NJSA 10:4-12B, specifically individual privacy, residency appeal, and collective bargaining agreements. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. A second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We'll see you all in about one hour. Thank you very much. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Sorry for the delay in our coming back to live session. Our executive session lasted a little bit longer than we had originally expected. We are going to go on to number four right now of your agenda. It's the first hearing of the public. As in the past 18 months, we have opened it up to agenda and non-agenda items. Remember, there will be a maximum of 45 minutes for public comment. Each person is limited to three minutes. You will need to state your name and address when you call in, or Ms. Quell will have it on record on her inbox email. Ms. Quell, I'm going to start with you.
Okay, I'll start with this first one is from Shelley Hutchinson. Our school nurse has made her position on vaccinations clear by way of her social media posts. To have an unvaccinated nurse for a school of 500 children under 12 years old is maximizing the risk of COVID for them, not minimizing it. We demand mandatory testing immediately for our school nurse. Waiting until October 18th, as per Governor Murphy's ruling, is dangerous to our children and present potential for them to get COVID from someone who is clearly anti-vaccination. I believe this was a negligent hire on our administration's part. Eighty-eight percent of nurses in this country are vaccinated. I question whether they still find Mrs. Rosen fit for this job.
I don't know if you guys wanted to say anything or no.
I have no comment relative to specific employees, but I can account for the fact that the board experienced a slight delay in executive session because, to their credit, the nine board members, the virtual board member, had spent detailed time reviewing the superintendent's suggested guidance. Bloomfield Board of Education understands that we are bound by the orders promulgated by Governor Murphy. We understand that a term and condition of employment for teaching staff members, for administrators, and for non-certificated staff is vaccine compliance or permissible opt-out, and the Board of Education administration will be enforcing all of that. I can state that, to the degree we have pre-employment checklists with respect to Mr. Murphy and the orders from Trenton changing, we do not have pre-employment checklists that indicate a particular staff member's inclination toward vaccine or opt-out. And we certainly will anticipate having other staff members with similar physician-based guidance or clergy-based guidance not taking the vaccine, and we have the governor's order for bypass and weekly testing relative to that. But I can certainly assure that any of our staff members, whether complying with the vaccine mandate or the permissible opt-out, will be required to engage in screening. We'll be working with my office and our lead school nurse in terms of DOH liaison, quarantine if at all appropriate, and notification of virtual learning. An individual's decision to vaccinate or to take a legal opt-out does not in any sense should or will influence how they provide mandatory health guidance for their elementary school. That is provided by the Department of Health through the governor's order, and I will see with the superintendent's directive that that is uniform throughout all of our eight elementary buildings.
Thank you, Mr. Jatoli. Ms. Quell, you have another one?
Yes. The next one is from Lori Kessler. Thank you for all the board is doing in getting the kids back in school. We are writing in to request that our district adopt the policy other districts have done, like Newark, that requires mandatory testing to start now and not wait until October for all unvaccinated employees. She also shared an interview with Dr. Fauci from today that specifically cited, "The best thing we can do to protect kids in schools is to surround them with vaccinated staff."
We appreciate and share the same concern our parents have for their children as we do as a board and administration. For 18 months, we have taken guidance during this global pandemic from the CDC, the NJDOE, the NJDOH, and our local health department, which we've worked very closely with. The administration is making preparations to enforce and prepare for Governor Murphy's mandate that he's given us regarding vaccine administration and the option of testing. We'll continue to do so. We will continue to ask the public to be patient. We know that's difficult. However, understand that the safety of our children and our staff come first. We work closely with our local bargaining units and non-bargaining units that we have within the district, and we have done that for 18 months. We'll continue to do that to ensure the health of all of our students and staff. Thank you.
Next one is from Maria Sanders. Hello, everyone. There is a lot we are grateful for with regards to returning back to school. At the same time, we have some concerns. My children are at Brookdale School. Kindergarten is eating in their classrooms. Grades five and six are eating outside. Grades one to four are eating in the gym. My concern is that when grades three and four are in the gym eating, according to Ms. Barton, there are 100 students. These students are unmasked and unvaccinated. The windows in the gym do not open, and the door supposedly needs to stay closed for safety reasons. I want to emphasize, the students who are in this enclosed space are unmasked and unvaccinated. While the unvaccinated students are unmasked, the windows are sealed and the door is closed. This is absurd. I have been picking up my third grader because neither she nor I feel comfortable having her in a large gathering while unmasked and unvaccinated. She stated that she feels the school doesn't seem to care about the little kids. She would love to be at lunch and recess with her friends, but also knows that being unmasked and unvaccinated in an enclosed room is not safe. Coincidentally, she is in line with CDC recommendations. I have sent several emails to Ms. Barton to both understand the rationale of these decisions and to offer support. Here are some of my questions. One, several parents would happily volunteer to help with an outdoor lunch. Parents can stay outside, stay masked, and show proof of vaccination. If we are permitted to volunteer for a book fair, why can't we volunteer for outdoor lunch duty? Question two, according to Ms. Barton, it is a safety concern to have the entire school outside. It is my understanding that Oakview School has all their students outside for lunch and recess. Please explain to me why this isn't doable for our students. The safety concern is that there are 100 unmasked and unvaccinated students in the gym without open doors or windows. Three, several other districts have shared with parents the percent of staff who are fully vaccinated, have received their first dose, or are unvaccinated, and the options do not disclose. Can you please share that info with us as well? It is important for parents to be aware of this information so they can make informed choices. This can be an anonymous survey. Thank you.
First, let me discuss the framework in terms of how we're operating at each one of our schools, and obviously, each one of our schools are going to be different based on the facility, the population, and the particular needs. So the road forward, the September guidance, has been distributed to all of our administrators so that they properly can plan and meet all the necessary protocols that need to be in place for our lunch to be successful. So at every building, it's unique to that building. Also, it's the second day of school. There is no game plan here that you can pull up and say, "This is how you do it, and this is the safest way to do it." We know that because for 18 months now, we've been working through the global pandemic together. Parents, students, Board of Education, teachers, all of our employees, and we problem solve. We try to say, "What is the best way to keep all of our children safe?" We are going to continue in that fashion moving forward, picking everyone's brain, revisiting plans that we have out there, making appropriate changes, making sure that we're within the framework of the guidelines to ensure that all of our children and our staff are as safe as possible. Again, I'm going to ask parents to be patient. I'm going to ask parents to reach out to their principals of their schools, share their concerns, talk about different options that are available at your facility so that we can make sure that our students are as safe as possible, working within the guidelines, and working together as a united force as we've done for the past 18 months.
Next one is from Lori O'Roche. Hello, I am the parent of a high school sophomore and a third grader at Brookdale Elementary. I am feeling conflicted. On the one hand, I'm so appreciative of our staff for all the hard work they did to make last year a positive experience for my kids, and I am equally appreciative of the work they are doing this year. On the other hand, I believe in science, and science tells us when indoors, COVID-19 can easily be transmitted to one another, especially when under certain conditions, such as a poorly ventilated end or crowded room with unmasked and unvaccinated people. The Delta variant is especially dangerous as it can take only minutes under these types of conditions to spread. It's quite clear from the science, our schools are not practicing safe COVID protocols. The high school is offering only for seniors to sign themselves out, while the other students can either choose to sit in a crowded lunchroom together without adequate spacing or ventilation and sit unmasked to eat their lunch, or they can go to an alternative location and not eat at all. So the choice is between starving yourself or risk getting COVID and perhaps spreading to a vulnerable member of your family who can't get vaccinated, such as a younger sibling. At Brookdale, grades one to four are being asked to sit in the gym spaced three feet apart with two grades in the room together. So 100 students in a room with no windows that can be opened and with a closed door. Also, if not enough room at a table, they are moving children to sit at a table other than with their classmates. The only other option is for parents to rearrange their schedules to pick up their children for lunch every day, and if they do so, the children are excluded from recess. As posted on the CDC website, the CDC recommends schools maintain at least three feet of physical distance between students within classrooms, combined with indoor mask wearing to reduce transmission risk. When this is impossible, it is especially important to layer multiple other prevention strategies, such as screening, testing, cohorting, and improved ventilation to help reduce transmission risk. A distance of at least six feet is recommended between students and teachers and between teacher-staff who are not fully vaccinated. Mask use by all students, teachers, staff, and visitors is particularly important when physical distance cannot be maintained. So the science says, when masked, children can be seated in their classrooms within three feet between them, but six feet is recommended if not vaccinated. So it seems the science isn't okay with a large group of unmasked, unvaccinated children being in an unventilated room together spaced only three feet apart. Additionally, our district is not screening tests nor cohorting. Recession is done successfully outdoor. Lunch and recess don't need to be done consecutively. Recession can be staggered among the grades, with some having recess in the morning and some in the afternoon. Oakview Elementary is doing lunch outdoors, asking parents provide yoga mats for their children to sit on. Brookdale's fifth and sixth graders are able to both do recess and lunch outside. Parents are offering to volunteer and supervise the children so we can have lunch outdoors safely. Why then can't we work together to find a solution so we can follow the science and allow for our children to eat safely together?
Okay, I want to reassure all of our parents that we are working closely with our local health professionals in the decisions that we make at our buildings. Again, I'll share that each one of our buildings are different, and they present a different set of problems and a different set of solutions. I do encourage our parents to talk to our building principals and share your concerns because we're very interested in that. I can tell you this, this administrative team together has visited all of our schools over the past two days, and what I'm seeing is tremendous compliance by our student population with mask wearing, combined with enthusiasm and passion to be back in schools. We're receiving the same welcome on those issues from our teaching staff and all of our employees. We understand the importance of the CDC regulations because we've been working with them together for 18 months. We'll continue to do it. We understand the importance of the road forward and the NJDOE and the NJDOH and the governor's mandate, and we want to make sure that we put these in place as we've done for the past 18 months to keep all of our populations as safe as possible and deliver the best educational product to all of our students. And the cooperation that I'm seeing in the schools is contagious. We had a wonderful opening of school. We'll continue to tweak our plans. We'll continue to listen to the community. We'll continue to build the plane as it's in the air, as it's been for the past 18 months, and I believe we'll be very successful at doing so.
Next one is from Susan Harrier and Ryan Panchek, and it said, "Clear Mount Place. As parents of three children at Brookdale Elementary School, we were very impressed with the care and safety we experienced when school reopened for hybrid learning this spring. So we were stunned to learn, only a week before school opened this month, that the students in grades one through four at Brookdale would be eating lunch in an unventilated cafeteria with 100 other unvaccinated students at half the distance recommended by the CDC. This is at a time when the Delta variant is spreading, and it is at least twice as transmissible as the original strain of COVID. So if a student is asymptomatic, it would only take a few minutes for them to expose many other students eating lunch. We feel we have no choice but to sign out our twin third graders for lunch every day to protect them from potentially getting the virus. But then, to add insult to injury, we learned that if we did that, they would be required to miss recess as well. For 18 months, we and many other parents have restricted the movements of our children to protect them and vulnerable family members. They have kept them away from their friends and many of the things that make childhood so wonderful and special. They haven't seen beloved relatives or visited a library, a mall, or an indoor restaurant. And now, because we are making the decision to remove them from a high-risk situation so they can eat lunch safely, the one thing they have been looking forward to for 546 days, running around on the playground with their friends, is being taken away from them. Can you make lunch safer for all students at Brookdale and any other schools that are in the same situation by allowing all students to eat outside, as encouraged by the road forward and the CDC? Other schools, including Oakview, have made that work. If you can't make it work, can you at least open the gym doors to increase fresh airflow per the CDC guidance? In the meantime, we request that the first through fourth graders who are being picked up to eat lunch more safely be allowed to attend recess so that their mental health is not harmed any more than it already has been. According to data released this Tuesday by the American Academy of Pediatrics, children now represent more than a quarter or 26.8% of weekly COVID cases nationwide. Please let do everything we can to make sure our children in Bloomfield don't become part of that scary statistic. Offering lunch outdoors and in their classrooms with windows open in inclement weather will go a long way to help keeping our students safe. Thank you.
We appreciate that email. Thank you.
Next one is from Daniel Kepler. Dear school administrators and Board of Education, thank you so much for everything you have done to get our children back in school. We are all so excited to be back. The administration, Ms. Barton, and staff at Brookdale have implemented very good prevention methods in the classrooms and around the school, but I am very concerned about lunch. As you know, at Brookdale, kindergarten eats in the classroom. Grades one to four eat in the gym, and grades five to six eat outside. I have a third grader and a fifth grader, and I am having a difficult time accepting that my two children will be experiencing different safety protocols, with one of them being offered a much safer option. 100 unmasked and unvaccinated kids in a windowless room without proper social distancing is a safety concern. I read the following on CDC website. "Schools should require masks and distancing in full-service lines. Keep students at least six feet apart while eating. Have students put their masks back on after eating, and do everything possible to improve ventilation, which includes using outdoor space. If students are not spaced six feet apart with proper ventilation, this is a high-risk situation because masks are removed while eating. I just wanted to try to find a way for kids in grades one to four to be able to eat in safe environment and also be able to attend recess so they are not isolated from their peers. Parents should not have to choose between their child's mental and physical health. I hope you are considering having grades one to four eat outside and/or in the classroom. Thank you so much."
We thank you for the email.
Next one is from Jessica Breiter, Demerits parent. I'm writing to urge you in the strongest possible term to begin testing unvaccinated district staff for COVID immediately. While Demerits parents may have responded to the particular circumstances of a recent hire at our school, this situation has brought to light a more urgent need to protect our children's health than many of us have previously anticipated. Be leaders on this issue. Do not wait for the governor's deadline to protect the health of Bloomfield children. Our neighbors in Newark are already setting a great example for safety with mandatory testing of unvaccinated staff. Please rise to the challenge and do the same. Thank you.
We understand the governor's mandate. We are in the process of making sure that we meet that mandate as we move forward. Thank you.
That concludes all the emails that I have received, and no more in my inbox.
Thank you, Ms. Quell. Mr. Atkinson, do you have any callers?
Yes. Hello? Hello?
...of making sure that we meet that mandate as we move forward.
Could you turn off your computer or TV?
Sure.
And could you state your name and address for the board?
Sure. My name is Mrs. Diaz, and it's Comley Place.
Thank you. Go ahead.
My question is that during the whole 18 months that these kids were home on hybrid or throughout the year, you guys kept saying that you spent $750,000 on PPE equipment. Where is that PPE equipment? Why are there no shields in the classrooms? And why are there no wipes for the kids to wipe down their desks in the classrooms? I have a third grader that has underlying conditions, is in class, and has to bring her own wipes, Lysol, and hand sanitizer to her class because she doesn't feel safe.
We have provided cleaning wipes to all of our classrooms in the entire district. All of the money that we spent on the cleaning and disinfectant materials have been distributed to all of the schools. They are used in all of our protocols. What I would encourage the caller is to call your building principal, share your concerns so that she can share what is actually taking place inside that classroom so that you're aware of what is taking place. Thank you.
Can I add to that quickly? Recently, there's been a lot of articles and data that's been put out. I know The New York Times recently put out something in regards to these desk shields that seems to be contrary to the guidance when the COVID virus first hit. So we've been extra cautious with providing that in our district at this point.
Seeing no other callers and no other email at 8:24, I will close the hearing of the public and move on to our next agenda item. Mr. G., the floor is yours with the superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Fishman. I apologize. My son and I are huge Cowboy fans, and he is blowing up my phone with whatever's transpiring in that game, so I do apologize for that.
As a giant fan, I'm going to hope that that means that they're losing. Just saying. Sorry to all the Cowboy fans out there.
First of all, I'd like to say to the board and to our viewing audience, we have had a very, very successful opening. We have been closed for 18 months, and seeing the buildings filled with staff and students has been nothing but joyous. The attendance in all of our schools has been excellent. The attendance in all of our schools has been excellent. The cooperation with our protocols have been excellent. The morale of the staff and students is off the charts. The positivity that's going on in the schools. Joe, and Vicki, and myself have been out in all of the schools over the past several days. We've been talking to principals and teachers and staff members about their feelings about getting back to school. It's extremely positive. No, things are not perfect. It is the opening of school like it is in every other year with the complexities of a global pandemic. But with that said, the Bengals rally during difficult times. We support each other. We look to each other for answers. We look to solve problems. We look to be positive. All of that is occurring in all of our schools, and I could not be prouder of our staff, of our students, of this Board of Education that stands ready to provide whatever necessary for our students to be safe, to be successful in the educational realm, and to have a wonderful, happy, safe school year. Just a great start to a great school year, and we're looking forward to more successes. Our kids have been amazing. They really have been amazing, from students in this high school, our middle school students, our elementary students. They're adorable. They're lovable. They're intelligent, and it's been a really, really great opportunity to see the buildings alive with students and staff and beautiful sounds. So that's my report. We're proud of it. We'll continue to make sure that things get better as we go on. We heard concerns during a public session from parents. We're going to revisit. We're going to tweak. We're going to make changes. And at the end of the day, we're going to keep everybody as safe as possible. That I can assure you. This Board of Education is behind that movement, have been for 18 months, will continue until this pandemic is behind us. And it's a great day to be a Bengal. Thank you.
I think it's always a great day to be a Bengal, so I'd like to echo everything that you've said, and I just want to give food for thought, having started my 23rd year of teaching yesterday, and my first full day of teaching with my kids since March 13th, 2020. Let me say that again. This was my first day, full day, with my students as a teacher in my 23rd year of teaching, first full day since March 13th, 2020. Our kids, our staff, have been on a roller coaster. We're going hybrid. We're closing down. We're going 100% virtual. Today, we're back in school 100%. Let's have a little patience. Nothing is going to be perfect on the first couple of days of school, like Sal said. My school included. I know that Dan has been a teacher for many years. I know Joe has been a principal. I know Nadeja works in the school district. I know Casey works for the schools. This is something that's going to take time and an adjustment period, just as it was an adjustment period when we left here on March 13th, just as it was last year when we opened up in hybrids. It's going to be okay. We're going to make sure that all the concerns have been heard. We're going to address them and make sure that our kids and staff are getting what they need to provide education. That is what our business is, is to educate these kids to the best of our ability and provide the top-notch education that the Bengals are used to. So please, as we go forward, I know we have asked this over the last 18, 19 months, whatever it is, since March 13th, 2020. We are a community. We know what we want. We know we put our kids first. We always put our best foot forward. We're going to be better tomorrow than we were today, and we were better today than we were yesterday. So just keep that in mind, and I know that the Bengals will continue to make you proud as we go through and have a terrific school year. Also, with that being said, I just want to wish the best of luck to our marching band, our fall sports and athletics and music program, art program, as they do a future endeavor, making us proud on the sports fields and on the stages with all of their things that they are continuing to do and shine. That's all I have to report.
Can I add something just to both of your reports?
Sure.
I know it's been mentioned a number of times, the excitement of the students and staff. We asked the staff and administration to compile a number of pictures that we shared as a news item. It's on the front part of our website. Please, when you get a chance, there's 100-something pictures that... Words can't express the excitement that these pictures show, so when you get a chance, take a look, and I think it sums up everything over the last 18 months in 100-something pictures. So thank you. Thank you to people that put those pictures out.
Thank you, Mr. Flores. Yeah, it was an exciting day. The kids, my personal kids that I teach, I haven't seen them. My freshmen are now juniors. My sophomores are now seniors, and it's a very different experience from seeing them on a two-by-two square to seeing a six-foot-two kid when they left was about five-foot-one. Over the last 18 months, how much they've grown, not only physically but mentally, emotionally, is exciting. It was palpable in my building. I'm sure it was palpable in each of these buildings in Bloomfield with all our staff and how excited they were and the kids were. Let's take that and run with it as we move forward. With that being said, I'm going to move on to the approval of minutes. Number six, may I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Salinas. Thank you, Mr. Walker. Discussion. Ms. Guel, may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Anderson.
Yes.
Mr. Berger.
Yes.
Ms. Dudley.
Yes.
Ms. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Heller.
Yes.
Mr. Morse.
Yes.
Ms. Salinas.
Yes.
Vice President Walker.
Yes.
President Fishman.
Yes. Moving on to number seven, the curriculum and instruction package. Mr. Berger, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Fishman. Before I begin with the agenda, I would like to just address a couple of issues to the parents and students. We have so many parents, thousands of parents, that are interested in the safety and the well-being of students in the local schools, and this is a great opportunity for parents to join the local home and school associations. If you're concerned about safety, the academic achievement, maybe even basketball, this is a time when all Bengals should get together and follow the continued Board of Education mantra of bend but don't break. Let's all get together. Let's all support our local schools by volunteering there. There may be some ideas can be shared in this venue. I think that would be terrific. I would also like to address the parents and students and my colleagues on some research I did on unfinished learning or learning loss or learning loss and unfinished learning. The professionals out there are saying that some of the... Hey, some of the length of time that students may be missing is up to six months. And when I think about what do we do about it, we discussed it with the administration, and the administration said programs. The administration said if the board wants to solve it, you need to expand the band. And we did. We did in three ways. The first way is by hiring more teachers. The Board of Education put together a fleet, an army of interventionists that is doing target assist work all the time. Thank you, Mr. Flores. Thank you, Sal, for that. We also increased the band with two programs that are outside the four corners of the day, one being a very successful summer school program that over 1,000 at-risk students attended, and the other, the most important, is this upcoming after-school meaningful hour known as the Backstop Program. In the minutes of our agenda, colleagues, you see that they are beginning to form with local control, with input from parents and teachers and principals at the local buildings. And this is where we really need to focus. This is a great place to find the time, to find the effort, to make up these six months. So what did we discuss in our meeting was basically the back-to-school, start-of-school stuff. We discussed the letter. We also discussed in executive, the after-school programs. Also, we have a few policies and regulations that are being approved for first read. Board members, please take a look. We have no EpiPendeligets and no professional development conferences at this time. We also received some updated AP data and some information on our SEALs by-Literacy Program. Thank you, President Fishman. May I please move seven... Seven...
A through C.
Seven, A through C.
Thank you, sir. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Discussion on curriculum. Ms. Guel, may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Anderson.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Berger.
Yes.
Ms. Dudley.
Yes.
Ms. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Heller.
Yes.
Mr. Morse.
Yes.
Ms. Salinas.
Yes.
Vice President Walker.
Yes.
President Fishman.
We are moving on to finance and facilities. Mrs. Salinas, the floor is yours.
Excuse me, President Fishman. I just have a quick question. Can I consult with...
Absolutely.
Ms. Guel, please.
Surely. Sidebar.
As a little bit of a filler, to tease the audience a little bit, we will be having a presentation that we alluded to at the previous board meeting, at the next upcoming board meeting, which I believe is September 21st, and it will be addressing a recent series of awards for our schools in regards to sustainable New Jersey, and that will be at the next board meeting for September 21st.
Thank you, President Fishman. I apologize for that. I'm sorry, colleagues. Our committee met Wednesday, September 1st. In attendance was myself, Ms. Dudley, Mr. Walker, Ms. Guel, and Mr. Skazova. I'm sorry, just be patient with me. I'm just kind of winded right now. I'm having a hard time breathing. Okay. Mr. Skazova provided the following facilities updates for Demerits exterior brick repairs. Base bid for work is about 95% completed. Rear stair treads and railing work will be done during the school year. The roof replacements at ECC and Franklin, both projects will be watertight prior to the opening of schools. The metal coping and edging will be delivered first week in October. The committee discussed the need to provide temporary protection while waiting for the coping to be installed. For the BMS security camera project, it will be completed prior to school opening. Ms. Guel discussed the following resolutions with the committee. Submission of the ARPESER-3 grant to DOE for approval. Authorizing lease purchase agreement with First Hope Bank to purchase two 54-passenger buses, total purchase price of $230,943.34. A five-year lease agreement at an interest rate of 1.238%. Approval of sending and receiving contracts with Essex County Vocational Schools for special education and regular education students. Contract for 32 regular education students and five special education students. Approval of service contract with AAGES Security Service for unarmed security service at BMS and VHS. And six guards at VHS and two guards at BMS at an hourly rate of $19.23. Approval of federal-funded positions under ESEA Title I and Title II-A. Ms. Guel also discussed with the committee regarding school opening and the development of Foley Field. We adjourned at 4:07. Can I please have a motion to move 8A through 8K?
Motion.
Thank you. Any discussion? Mr. Walker.
I just wanted to highlight to my colleagues one thing that's not on the minutes here due to the timing of our meeting. As all of you know, we had a recent major storm in the area with Hurricane Ida blowing through and causing severe damage throughout the town of Bloomfield. I want to give the administration, and particularly the custodial and maintenance staff, a ton of credit because our school district really did an amazing job of being prepared, being ready for the storm, and being able to clean up quickly. It was amazing that we were able to open as effectively as we were. We weren't talking about any other issues related to that, and we could really enjoy opening day. So I just want to take a second to say thank you on that and just highlight that the good work of the committee, our committee chair, and the administration overall prepared us for this. So nice job all around.
I just want to piggyback on that real quick and say to any family who has been affected, on our website, there is a link with a number of resources that are available to you. It's under the news section on the front page. And also, a shout-out, I don't know if everybody knows this, but Mr. G., Billy Manning, were actually out the night of the storm, probably till 1:00 or 2:00 in the morning, driving around town, checking on each school building, helping citizens who needed help and were stranded in cars and things like that, driving around town till 1:00, 2:00 in the morning. I think the last time I spoke to them was quarter to 2:00 before I fell asleep. They were still out on the road, which was also Sal's birthday, so it's a great way to start your birthday, unfortunately, but thank you to you and thank you to Billy Manning for checking on all of our properties and making sure we were ready for opening day. And like Ralph said, to our custodial and maintenance staff, amazing job, top to bottom. Anyone else?
President Fishman, I do believe you sang "Happy Birthday" at 2:00 in the morning to him on a conference call as we were assessing the damage, so not to out you as well.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah. That was after having been up. My nephew was born the day before, so I'd been up since 3:30 the morning before, so I was pretty much up 24 hours. Luckily, I remember the words. Yeah, "Don't quit." So it was a busy 24 hours for the Fishman household, as well as for you guys out in the field, so... Whoa, my pen is flying. But I wanted to thank you because not every superintendent and, you know, our staff out there in the middle of the night, in the middle of a storm that wrecked a lot of people's homes and cars and property and loss of life statewide. You don't see other superintendents out there making sure that their staff and their buildings are going to be okay for opening day, and that's a kudos to you and the rest of the staff because they've done it time and time again, and I don't think... I think we take it for granted sometimes that it doesn't happen other places, so I just wanted to publicly say thank you to you and Billy for doing that.
Thanks. I wanted to ask this earlier, but what's the assessment for Foley Field and when it'll be maybe possibly functional again? I think at this point, Ben, we're in touch with the insurance folks. We're in touch with vendors. We're trying to get everything together to have all the appropriate people come to Foley, look at it, assess it, make their recommendations. For us to be able to share it with Finance and Facility Committee, and then certainly with the entire board, and then make some decisions moving forward. I know that's not satisfying to our athletic teams who use that field, especially our football team. Our hearts go out to them, of course, but they're a resilient group. We relocated with the help of our AD, Mr. Jenkins, our first game that was going to be played at home. They've been shuffling in terms of where we're practicing, using upper Foley, and making plans for games that are going to come up in the future. I know it's the commitment of this board and administration to make sure that the Foley facility is safe first and foremost so that we can use it moving forward and make the most wise decisions regarding finances for the long-term use of that field. It's kind of funny in a way that all of our buildings pretty much survived this pretty well. I mean, our facilities guys, our custodians, the men and women, were out that night, came to our buildings, the shifts that weren't working, got right to work, worked either to 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning or completely through the entire night. The Watsons crew got hit really hard because we lost power. That end of town got hit really, really hard. So Bloomfield did take a tough blow, and the community as a whole has been very resilient in coming back, and the school district has been amazing with the support that we're getting from all of our groups. So that's a great question, Ben. I know that our athletic folks certainly want to know what's happening there. We're on top of it. We're working with Mr. Jenkins. He's active in terms of working with our business administrator to make sure that all of the appropriate people get to see the facility, make the right determinations, bring the correct information back to the board so that the board can make the best decision possible for all of our students and the community.
To add to that, too, in true Bengal fashion, at Watsons School, which arguably got hit the worst, if not pretty bad, Dr. Rosamillion and her staff on the first day of school put a table outside with supplies, cleaning supplies, water, on their own behalf, on their own dime, to support their community. So kudos to Dr. Rosamillion, the Watsons staff... staff, in true Bengal form, sticking together.
Any other discussion? Ms. Quo may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Berger? Ms. Dudley?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Heller?
Yes.
Mr. Morse?
Yes.
Ms. Salinas?
Yes.
Vice President Walker?
Yes.
President Fishman?
Yes. We are on to number nine, Personnel and Management. Mr. Heller, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Fishman. Tonight's agenda items include typical resignations and retirements. We thank those who have served the district with distinction. We are rescinding some appointments. We are making new appointments, changing leaves of absences, have some transfers on the agenda, extra compensation, degree changes. Congratulations to those who have attained Masters and Master 30th, um, 30. We have some substitute appointments, home instruction approvals, and volunteer approvals. With that being said, the Personnel and Management Committee met on September 2nd. Present was Board Attorney and Director of Administration, Mr. Detoli, Board Member Green. I was present as well. Unfortunately, President Fishman, um, new aunt was unable to, uh, to be present with us, but we look forward to her participation at the next meeting. We reviewed the personnel notes for tonight's meeting. The committee members had some questions. Mr. Detoli answered in turn. We talked about the Governor's guidance related to school opening. Um, all of the questions that the board members had were addressed by Mr. Detoli. The committee made some suggestions to the administration with regard to, um, protocols that are involved, uh, now that we're all back in person. Finally, we talked about the, um, board policies that are on the agenda for first read today, and, um, recognizing that we have some second read agendas, items, uh, second read policy items. And with that, I would like to move numbers 9A through 9L.
Thank you, Mr. Heller. A second? Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Discussion? Ms. Quo may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Berger?
Yes.
Ms. Dudley?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Heller?
Yes.
Mr. Morse?
Yes.
Ms. Salinas?
Yes.
Vice President Walker?
Yes.
President Fishman?
Yes. We are on to Policy and Regulations, number 10. May I have a motion for 10A and 10B?
Motion.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Second.
Tie. Who does the tie go to, Ms. Quo? We're giving it to Dan. Any, uh, discussion on policies and regulations? Ms. Quo may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Berger?
Yes.
Ms. Dudley?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Heller?
Yes.
Mr. Morse?
Yes.
Ms. Salinas?
Yes.
Vice President Walker?
Yes.
President Fishman?
Yes. We are on to the second hearing of the public, number 11 on your agenda. As a reminder, there will be maximum of 45 minutes for public comment. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. You must state your name and address, uh, either on your email or when you talk on the phone. Uh, when you talk on the phone, please remind yourself to mute or turn off your TV or whatever computer that you're looking at us on, uh, so that we do not get feedback.
If I may, I received an email from a citizen to say the phone calls didn't go through. They were not able to, our calls are not being taken. Okay. And I also have an email. Go ahead.
Hello? Hello? Hello?
Just as a reminder, as we're sorting that out, the caller calling in, the number's 973-381-7200.
Hi, can you hear me?
Hello, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes. Can you state your name and address for the board?
Sure. My name is Angie Coniker, and I'm calling from Nine Doris Place.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Um, I understand that our school district is following the Governor's mandate. However, our neighboring school district has, um, implemented mandatory testing for unvaccinated, um, employees now, and I would like to know, as a parent of two children in our district, how it is that this board can say that you're doing everything to keep my children safe, and yet you have not implemented mandatory testing for unvaccinated staff now, and instead I am, as a parent, am supposed to wait for another six weeks for this to take place? Thank you.
Thank you for your phone call. The importance of pupil... The importance, I, I have said to Sal in the 10 years that we've worked together, and I mean this sincerely, that our curriculum model and our instruction model are of utmost importance in the Bloomfield School District, but nothing could be accomplished, uh, from a finance curriculum, facility perspective until we ensure that we have compliance with the health and safety of this community. And I believe, personally, as, you know, a staff member who was afforded by the county an opportunity to get vaccinated, as I did, uh, that this is part of our responsibility as public employees. I don't suggest that that's everyone's sentiment, that's mine, and I respect the Governor's posture, uh, but do realize that the logistics existing in a bureaucracy, whether it's, uh, a public entity like a school board or other, requires coordination with collective bargaining units, coordination with the hierarchical structure and the Board of Trustees that we report to, the nine men and women in front of us. That said, we are not looking to be dilatory, but we're looking to be responsible. Tomorrow morning at 10 o'clock, the uniform compliance documentation will be circulated to all staff, certificated and non-certificated, in compliance with the Governor's order. Any individual who does not upload compliance in terms of a vaccine card or a screenshot of the New Jersey Docket application for vaccine compliance will be routed to a separate Google form, uh, for which they will be required for mandatory weekly testing on Monday. All of this is in accordance with Governor's Murphy's October 18th deadline. Uh, the, uh, delay, the, the delay here, if one is seen, uh, is simply by interpreting the Governor's order, which came out while I believe the Governor was out of state. We awaited his guidance. We went through the proper protocols of speaking with our collective bargaining units, briefing our board. Uh, to the degree it wasn't fast enough, I offer my apology, but I certainly think in our managed bureaucracy that we were able to effectuate this process in a responsible period of time, uh, and certainly in compliance with the Governor's order. To the degree, um, Mr. Murphy makes any modifications, we will adjust. I have to say that in closing, uh, part of the considerations, uh, taken into serious account and part of my regular dialogue with Mr. Flores and Mr. Goncalves in this regard is, uh, the understanding of testing that is available, offering our staff members testing sites that are convenient to their domicile, understanding that they may not live within Essex County, understanding that this may incorporate the involvement of the Department of Health locally for onsite testing if appropriate. So all of this were consideration factors, not delay mechanisms, and to the degree it wasn't done fast enough, uh, in the caller's estimation, I offer my apologies, uh, but with the return of 10-month staff, uh, a day ago, I think it was done quite well. Can I add to that, too? Uh, Ms. Coniker, thank you for your suggestion and your question. I also would like to add towards a lot of the commentary tonight, this guidance that gets put out there in articles and headlines is continuously changing. The document that we were given to provide structure to our opening of schools was updated with many changes as of September 1st, and continues to be updated, as we're told, through the Department of Education. And to Mr. Detoli's point, we were doing the best we can to be practical, to be fair, to work with everyone that we can to ensure the safety of our students. But the guidance that's being delivered to us and that we have to abide by is fluid at best, and we are on top of it on a daily basis. Thank you.
Do you have any?
Uh, no more calls.
All right, first one is from Joshua Trojek. Can you please share the information during the public comment, which is what I'm doing? Sorry, I missed it earlier. In light of recent developments with hot, with a hiring made at Demerit School, please implement weekly COVID testing immediately. Other districts, including notably neighbor, neighboring Newark, which implemented such measures last school year, have gone beyond the administration's October 18th requirement and have implemented such testing already. Unfortunately, the luxury of delaying until October is no longer an option.
I think, I think Mr. Detoli addressed that in his last statement. That was Josh, correct? Yeah, um, I'll say one last thing, and I am, this late night, the board president has a planned presentation, but again, uh, this is not, uh, a political commentary. I am not a politician, I'm not the superintendent. Uh, I believe, as an educator, that we have a, a preeminent responsibility, our sole responsibility is health, safety, and welfare. And realizing that we rely in cooperation with scientists and experts in the field, not politicians, we have deferred to the scientists locally available to us and the experts in the field, the medical providers. And to the degree, Josh, uh, and to the degree, to the deference of the caller who preceded Josh, we can begin, uh, a, a pattern of more rigorous, uh, testing onsite, uh, that meets, meets some of the timeframes expressed by members of the public. The administration, myself, will certainly put no barrier toward that implementation. We have put out a structure that we believe we are compliant. We have put out a structure that has been run by, uh, various bargaining units. I want the members of the public to know that notwithstanding a Governor's order, we have an obligation to put forward to our directors, our Board of Education, information that is not going to be trampled, uh, or supplanted by a grievance. Good, bad, or indifferent, that's the nature of how the Board of Education politics work, and I believe we've accomplished all of those goals, but to the degree we can engage in something that meets the public's expectation of more timely and more rigorous, I certainly know myself, Mr. Flores, Mr. Goncalves are receptive to that.
One more. Um, it's from Noel, Noel Gatz and Derek Gatz. We are parents of two Brookdale students at A, NA, BHS Junior. I recall being grateful for BOE's thoughtful diligence during the first year of pan, of the pandemic. With a raging variant that is increasingly affecting our young people with newly discovered long-term and serious inflammatory issues, I'm dismayed to see that there are not standard requirements to allow for outdoor or separated lunch and recess breaks for our kids. Until our children are able to be vaccinated, it is unreasonable, it is unreasonable that a Brookdale grades 1 to 4 are forced to eat lunch in a closed cafeteria with 100 other unmasked children at less than three feet distance apart. Or their families are forced to pick them up for the duration of the lunch period without even being able to return them for outdoor playtime with their peers. Our high schooler has no option to be put on a list to sign himself out at lunch, so his option is to fast or go unmasked around hundreds of kids and risk bringing an infectious variant home, um, to, to vulnerable family members. Only seniors can sign themselves out. As parents, we have to prioritize signing our little ones out at lunch and can't also sign out our eldest. Families choosing to take the recommended, recommended steps to stop the spread of virus are, again, being penalized, and many don't even have the option to shift schedules constantly and pick up their children. Most schools in our area are finding a way to accommodate for outdoor or separate and ventilated lunch areas so kids can safely be in schools for their whole day. At our elementary school, a group of parents have offered to volunteer in weekly shifts to observe the class or help outside to make sure kids stay safe, and we were rejected. We don't just have unrealistic expectations, but many of us have offered to be part of the solution, and we, and we still cannot get an accepted solution from leadership. Please follow the data and do not subvert the facts for convenience. We hopefully only have a few months left until we have the option to vaccinate our little ones. And at that very least, at the very least, the school should provide outdoor or separated lunch breaks. Regular testing and disclosure of anonymous percentage of vaccinated students and teachers' staff should be disclosed to parents, uh, should any cases of infections at our schools.
Thank, thank you to Mr. and Mrs. Gatz. I think that this was discussed fully, uh, the situation in the first hearing of the public, so if I can ask that we not, uh, have to reiterate ourselves, that would be greatly appreciated. Any other emails? Do you have any callers, Mr. Atkinson? Sure.
Hello?
Hi.
Hi. Could you state your name for the board, please, and address?
Hi, my name is Christopher, uh, supposed to be 24 Lakewood Terrace.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Um, and I just wanted to thank the board. I heard, um, saying you were going to be moving up the timeline for testing of unvaccinated workers, and, um, I just want to thank you for considering our children's safety, um, that we can't, you know, these children who can't get vaccinated and are unprotected right now. Um, so thank you for, for committing to that.
Thank you for calling, sir. Did you have a question?
No, it was more, it was a comment that, um, so thank you for your, for committing to, to that, to moving up the timeline.
Thank, thank you for your call, sir. Much appreciated. Uh, the safety of our staff and students is of utmost importance. Thank you for your call.
Hi, can you hear me?
Hello?
Hi, yeah. Could you state your name and address for the board?
Uh, yes. My name's Brian Hutchinson. My address is 71 Moore Avenue.
Thank you. Go ahead.
So, um, relating to the executive order issued, um, 253, in paragraph seven, it states that nothing in this order shall prevent a covered setting from instituting or, uh, basically higher testing policies or higher vaccination policies. My question relating to, um, well, my child's at, at Demerit School, but is there something preventing the board from saying unvaccinated teachers need to show up with their own, uh, their own, excuse me, basically their own negative test, rather than a, a broad policy that applies to everyone?
Sir, before I let any of the administrators speak, do you have any other further questions? Cause...
Hello?
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I'm sorry. So pointing to my question is, is there something preventing the board from saying unvaccinated teachers need on their own to get tested and show up with a negative test?
Yes, sir. I understand your question.
Immediately, rather than waiting until October?
Yes, sir. I understand your question. My question... My question to you is, do you have any further questions before I let the administrators answer your one question?
No, no.
Okay, hang tight. Nick, do you want to take it?
Mr. Hutchinson has reached out to the assistant superintendent in his capacity, I believe, as an attorney relative to specific matters pertaining to an elementary school and particular staff, and I'm not going to engage in comment relative to that matter, but for the very discreet issue, and my comment will end with this. Staff members will comply per the superintendent's directive modeled after the governor's order with weekly, the governor's order provided either weekly or biweekly COVID testing. The individual staff members, as of the date, and I appreciate Mr. Flores's clarification of a few moments ago, and I hope members of the public appreciate, as I do believe the Board of Education does, that this guidance, as frustrating as it is, is fluid. Members of our staff will be provided Essex County as well as adjacent testing sites, that includes public testing sites and private pharmacies, and it'll be up to those individuals to submit that required information to the degree the medical or religious opt-out is elected by the staff member. Is that responsive to the question?
Starting, that document is going to be fluid tomorrow morning.
As I stated to the two callers previously, tomorrow at 10:00.
Thank you. Any other callers, Mr. Atkinson? Any more emails, Ms. Guo?
Yes. This email is from Liz Figgenshu, 107 Essex Avenue. Can you please explain what procedures are in place for when a positive COVID case from either staff or student is reported to a school? Elementary school parents are informed when a classmate is found to have lice because it can spread throughout the case. So I assume parents will be informed when a classmate or teacher tested positive for COVID for the same reason. Will that information be shared with the parents of all children who share a space with that COVID-positive person? Will the parents of middle schools and high school students be informed if someone in one of their classes tested positive? Will there be a quarantine period for those children who were exposed to that positive person? I would also like to echo the sentiments of other parents of high school students that the current lunch options available for those students are severely lacking. Per a letter from Mr. Jennings, the only options are for the students are to eat in crowded lunchroom, which does not comply with the CDC standards of COVID safety, or to skip eating lunch altogether. I don't understand how a district that has worked so hard to address the COVID crisis with such success on other fronts is able to disregard the safety of the students in this way. Please make finding another lunch option for high school students a priority. Thank you.
The first part of the question I will take in regards to close contact. If your child is deemed a close contact in the standards of the local health department, you will receive notification from the district in regards to a suggested quarantine time. We work locally with our health department. Our head nurse for the district serves as a liaison to the health department and is in contact with them in regards to every COVID-positive case that we're notified of. In regards to the high school lunch and other lunches that were mentioned this evening, our building principals, with, as I noted before, very fluid guidance and suggestions, not mandates, mandates not suggestions, and deciphering between the two, and with a mandate from the governor to have a full day of school inclusive of lunch, have worked very hard and continue to work very hard in regards to building out their lunch plans. Having been a former elementary school principal, lunch prior to COVID and the logistics that are involved, as far as supervision, serving lunch, adequate space, recess time, inclement weather, is difficult to begin with. Throw in COVID, and as I mentioned before, suggestions, not mandates, mandates not suggestion, deciphering between the two only adds complexity to the issue. As Superintendent Goncalves has noted before, we will continue to work with our building administration. We appreciate all the suggestions being made tonight. We will take them into consideration and reach back out to our building principals and see how we could best serve our lunches in our schools in a safe and effective manner. Thank you.
Ms. Guo, anybody else? Mr. Atkinson? Seeing none, I'm going to close the second hearing of the public. And I'm going to move on to business, and we're going to do A, B, and then I believe Charlene Peterson should be on shortly. Delegate Ad-Hoc Committee reports, 12A. Anyone? Jess, did you raise your hand?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, go.
Is this for House of Representatives? Is this the time now?
Yeah.
So our next, uh...
You're on my turn.
I'm sorry.
Forgive me. Thank you, President Fishman. I just wanted to say that our first county SBA meeting is Wednesday, September 22nd, 6:00 to 9:00. It's at the Woodland in Maplewood. I encourage all board members to join because it is in-person. You are only going to get credit for in-person, meaning they're not going to do any partial credit for hybrid options, so just to make that known. Okay, board members? Thank you so much, President Fishman. That concludes my report.
I'd like to make it duly noted, as Charlene is going to come on, and hopefully she hears me, is that if we're doing county meetings in person, that it's disappointing that our statewide conference is virtual. So just as a side note, it's nice that we're going to be able to be back in person with our colleagues from the county, and it's disappointing that we won't be able to have that opportunity statewide, so thank you for sharing. Anyone else, 12A. 12B, new business, old business, information items. Mr. Morse.
Thank you. So the Community Engagement Committee was going to meet right before Ida hit, and one of the things that we were going to discuss was Hispanic Heritage Month is coming up, and what are we going to do? Do we want to do anything? Do we have the bandwidth, all these things? If you have suggestions, we're going to get together, I hope, in the next couple of weeks when things settle down, but please let me, Shane, Casey know, Joe. We're open to ideas. Obviously, with COVID, things are limited, but just to let everybody know that we're at least talking about it and hopefully can get something planned. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that, and I know that we already have very successful programs throughout the district, and if somehow we can open those up and make them district-wide. Casey, you guys, Shane, Ben did a great job with Juneteenth, and I know this is another big project with a lot of time involved. Know that the rest of us are behind you with whatever you need, but we already do have in place some very successful programs that we could try and expand our best practices instead of trying to reinvent the wheel. So I encourage you guys to reach out to Sal and Joe and let them tell you about those and then see what we can do to build upon them.
Sounds good.
Anybody else?
Yep.
Thank you, President Fishman. Unfortunately, I was not able to attend as BOE liaison the recycling, township recycling committee yesterday, but I want to thank Ms. Palagano, Township Clerk, for alerting me to correspondence from Mr. Manning, who acts as our, who is our custodial supervisor in district in reference to some issues with picking up recycling at the schools by the township carrier. Hopefully, those will be resolved. Ms. Palagano has been very attentive to our concerns, our needs. In fact, the township very generously is allowing us to take excess recycling after pickups have happened in district to the DPW during the week when arranged in advance, but the concerns that we had right now were actually for missed pickups by the township's carrier. Hopefully, those will be resolved, and I'll definitely keep all of you posted.
Thank you, Mr. Heller. Anyone else? Okay, so for the members of the public, we are on 12C, and if you can see, Charlene Peterson is on our screen. She's joining us remotely from New Jersey School Boards Association. This is a yearly thing that we do as a board. It is going to be our board and district goals. Charlene is gracious enough to join us and help us out with that, to move our process along. So at this moment, the only other thing that is going to happen after this, for those of you that are watching on TV, on WBMA, on Facebook, social media, is going to be adjournment. So we, as a board, are doing this as we go forward. It's something we do all the time, but there's no other hearing of the public decision-making, so to speak, that we will be voting on other than the board goals and district goals that we do every year. So I just want to tell the members of the public and the people that are watching on TV what's going to happen next. We're going to do this with Charlene, and then the next thing would be adjournment. So if you choose to not watch us anymore, thank you for joining us. If you want to hang tight and watch us do board goals, stick around. Hi, Charlene.
Hello. It's a pleasure to be with you tonight. It sounds like it's already been a long night for you tonight, right? Like you said, I'm here tonight to help the board in its annual goal-setting process, and we have the advantage of having had the input from all of the district stakeholders when we did the strategic plan. So now when we set our annual goals, we use that input from our stakeholders to help drive this process. I have a brief PowerPoint, and really the main reason for it is just to display the goals so that everyone can see them. So I am going to present now, hopefully, and pull that up just so that everyone can see it. Okay. So as we said, tonight, we are setting district goals, which are those annual goals, recognizing that we are using the work from the strategic plan. So this is the board's way of helping establish priorities for the year by identifying those, typically we say three to five things that we think are so important to move the district forward, that we're going to hold the superintendent accountable by putting them in his evaluation. And that is also then how we assist the community or use the work from the community from the strategic plan to make sure that it doesn't sit on a shelf, that it is actually something that drives the work that we're doing in the district. And then separate from that are board goals. There's more and more evidence to support that the work that boards do helps make a positive impact on student achievement, so we would like to continually reflect on our work and see what things we can do to enhance our work, with the distinction being then that all the tasks to achieve that have to be within the board's purview. And then recognize that everything is linked together, that with the end result being increased student achievement, so it would be the expectation then that these goals that are priorities we're establishing here tonight, then we would see it reflected in other goals, see it reflected in the work of the building, reflected in the work of the classroom. And then recognize that the work we do here has to be centered on our students. Like I said, district goals, there's typically three to five of them, and because student achievement is the basis of our work here, that we say that that has to be the basis of at least one of the goals. And recognize that we sometimes are used to seeing metrics or specifics in goals, but in this case, that is often in the action plan, which would be the kind of the how that the administration develops to tell us how they're going to accomplish the what. So we're more usually aligned with determining the priorities and then recognizing that the measure or the metrics are contained in the action plan. And we all have a role in this process, and it's important to us to know what the values and aspirations of our community is, and then we use that to translate into the goals that we are establishing here tonight, recognizing that our administration carries them out, and then the work takes place in the classroom. All of the work that we do centers around the district's mission statement, the reason that we're here. It helps drive all the work, with the goals being no exception. So having said that, as we look at district goals, like I said, things that we would consider would be last year's goals. We would consider the strategic plan, what our student achievement needs are, our community priorities, any initiatives currently going on in the district, emergent issues, making sure we're supporting our mission and vision, and that we have the resources. So having said that, we're going to start with last year's goals, and last year's goals are built around the strategic plan. So we essentially looked at those to be broad-based goals that were broad enough to allow the actions that we needed to do to move the district forward, to use that as the basis of our work. And then we took each one of those goals and we talked, decided whether it could continue, and then if there were specific things that were important to the board to be focused on for this particular year. So even though perhaps the goal statement might look the same, the action plans and the steps to accomplish that goal would be different. So because I'm sharing my screen, I can't see all of the board members or anything, so I will need some help in acknowledging if anyone would like to talk, but I would like to, I guess, now open it up to the board and as we look, go through each one of these goals from last year, recognizing that they are the strategic plan goals, decide if, yes, we would like to continue with that, and if there's any particular focus within that goal. So the first one is our student achievement goal.
Charlene, can I just interrupt for one second?
Sure.
Where's Tom? I just want to see if we can get this bigger on our screen because it's very tiny what you're showing us.
Okay.
So hang tight.
You also probably have, you have it on your agenda, right? The goals?
Not what you're sharing in front of us.
Okay.
It's at the beginning of our agenda, yes.
Yes, the first page.
And it's also on the website. So just hang tight, bear with us one second.
No problem.
No, it's the, yeah, it's the keyboard. And I think it's up on the top tab. You see it?
I just can't see.
Oh, sorry.
We're on the first.
It's the first thing.
The first page of the agenda.
Have you called over?
Yes, on the left side.
Yes, so this is not moving.
Okay. Does everybody see it on the first page of the agenda?
I can make a little copy.
It's okay, it's on the agenda. We're good.
As long as it's the same as what's on the agenda. Identical.
It's identical.
Yes.
Okay, Charlene. Sorry, what did you need? Do you want us to go around the room and see who wants to put input in for changing something?
So first, we'll look at this first goal that is the student achievement goal that talks about developing the whole child by providing access to curriculum that nurtures the social, emotional, intellectual needs of all students. Last year, the focus that was important to the group was looking at the CTE opportunities and also the consideration of multiple data sources to measure our student achievement. So wanted to, like you said, then...
Sure.
... their feedback.
I got you. I'll be your liaison here. I'll be your liaison. So we're going to start, we'll go around the room. We're going to start with Mr. Heller, and then we'll work our way around to Mrs. Salinas and then Mr. Anderson virtually. Mr. Heller.
Thank you, President Fishman. Thank you, Charlene Peterson, for guiding us through this. I think this is an important district goal. I think it needs to remain. I think it's certainly been a concern of this Board of Education and the administration. I believe that now that we're returning, I'll say, to a bit more of a normal, we can have more regular reporting in regards to our achievements towards this district goal. We even had a policy tonight for CTE on the agenda. I don't believe that this district goal is complete by any way, shape, or form, and I think it's something that we placed at the very beginning, top of our list, because we felt that it was that important jointly between the administration and the board.
Well said, Michael. Mr. Walker?
I have no comment.
Mr. Berger?
Well, we're going after unfinished learning and learning loss by creating programs. Charlene, just like you suggest every time we hear you speak, that the commodities we trade on boards of education are programs, and hopefully, we could add into our goals the continued... the continuation of growing our summer school program and this wonderful backstop program that we have, starting in October, that we will unite the home and school associations with our teachers, with our professionals, and broadening our band. That's, I think, where we need to work and put that as a goal, which I completely believe is achievable.
So do you mean as a goal or just a focus, like where we have CTE?
Goal. A specific goal, which we can attain.
But we're not adding goals right now? We're just looking at the first one that we have.
Okay.
Those are on your student achievement, right?
Yes.
That's what I'm saying, we could make it as a focus of that one.
No, this particular one is about unfinished learning and learning loss, or learning loss and unfinished learning. That is what I would like to concentrate on. And the two programs that I discussed were basically about that. So however you'd like to put it in there, President Fishman, I know what.
I'm going to defer to Charlene. Do you think it should be where the CTEs and multiple data sources are? Or does it need to be a separate goal?
I think that it appears, just based on the way it is described, that these are things that are significant to student achievement, and that this would be our focus, a focus for this year, of making sure that we concentrate on those things. As the administration would look at the steps that would be in the action plan for the student achievement goal, that these would be the things that the board would be looking for in the action plan.
Okay, perfect. Hold on, we're going back to Mr. Berger.
The portfolio-based assessment. Let's shoot for the moon, grab the stars, that's what I'm talking about. The portfolio-based assessment, can we please add that in there, colleagues?
So goal number one, portfolio-based assessment, backstop, and summer program for learning, unfinished learning, not learning loss. Thank you, Mr. Berger. Mr. Morse?
Nothing to add.
Thank you. Nadia Green, Ms. Green. I'm sorry, I drew a blank, I'm getting a little punchy here. That's okay. Been up since 5:00 in the morning, sorry.
No, nothing else to add.
Oops. Shane wants to be on repeat. Ms. Dudley.
I have no comment.
I think we're all getting a little punchy. Mrs. Salinas.
We're still on district goal one, correct?
Just the first one, student achievement?
I'm following it, yes. It's great, I love it, let's stick to it.
Okay. So if we could just make those additions that Shane asked, we'd like to leave number one intact. Oh, sorry, Dan. Dan, I didn't, I'm sorry, Dan, I'm looking right at you, go ahead.
I also want to add that about the assessment Shane said, but if we can get something in there also about project-based learning.
That's a good one, Dan. Good. So is that good for number one? Are we going to number two?
Yes, we are. So number two, so last year, as we looked at our finance facilities and technology goal, last year, we added the word "healthy" to the goal. So it was create a safe, healthy, and secure learning environment, equipped to deliver the curriculum and the programs, and then the resources that best equip all students to succeed.
I'm going to go backwards and start with Mr. Anderson first.
I think, I mean, I like the way that's, and I think it's something we can just continue to do, it's just a normal kind of thing. I think maybe put in something about the sustainability and the healthy, secure learning environment. I don't know if that would fit, the sustainability would fit into that one or another one, but add something along that line.
No, it would definitely fit there.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Mrs. Salinas.
No president, Fishman, I like it.
Okay. Ms. Dudley.
Not at this time, no.
You guys are making me crack up. Ms. Green.
Same here, I like it, and I think it should remain the same.
Mr. Morse.
I think we're good with that one.
Mr. Berger.
I'm with me.
Mr. Walker.
I think the goal's great. I think that this is one goal that, I know the related board goal is about practicing fiscal responsibility. And I just, I'm not sure if this fits underneath this goal or not, but I do think we've got some rough waters ahead. So I think it's going to be important for us to work as a team in terms of continuing to prioritize how we're using our resources to create this safe, healthy, and secure learning environment. So again, I'm not sure how best to phrase that, but I just want to highlight the need to continue to revisit the Top 30 Projects List, and the need to continue to revisit the prioritization of district projects all around. So I don't know, I'm not sure where that fits into this, but similar to Mr. Berger, I think this is one that needs a little bit of more description underneath it.
Great.
Charlene is very good at taking notes and making us sound a lot better than we sound ourselves. Mr. Heller, you're good, we're good.
Okay. Good. The next goal then was your diversity and inclusion goal, and said that we wanted to improve equity in our programming and increase diversity in our staffing.
This time, I'm going to start with Ms. Green.
So I think that should continue to be a goal and a focus for us.
Anything to add, or no?
No, nothing else to add.
Okay. I'm going to you right now. Casey Dudley. Come on.
Nope, I'm not.
Give it up, come on.
I think it's, the goal should remain, but we can definitely put a, although it should be a focus, more of a focus on this goal. So I think we should make it definitely one of our top priorities of focus.
I concur. Mrs. Salinas.
I think this is a great goal, it should continue. And I think we came a long way when it comes to being supportive and... What goal are we on right now?
Three, diversity and inclusion.
Oh, my gosh, I'm on four.
Oh. Well, just say three is good then, too, so we're good.
I'm sorry, but yes, I like district goal three. I think it should stay the same. And honestly, I think we've come a long way coming from this. So yes, it should continue, and nothing to add. I'm sorry, I'm sleepy.
We're all getting tired, here we go. Mr. Anderson.
The only thing I would add, I like thinking of recognizing and maybe, I can't think of the right word, and celebrating, something like, celebrating the district's diversity, not just recognizing it, but taking advantage of it and using it.
I like that, Dan.
Celebrate, that's a good one, Dan.
I like that, Dan. Mr. Heller.
Celebrate.
Thank you, President Fishman. I think last year, and maybe in years past, I've mentioned that it would really mean a lot if we had published on our webpage a profile of who our teacher was in district, how many men, how many women, what their educational attainment is, and what their ethnicity is. I think that this should be an easy task for the administration to produce, and one that will at least allow us to gauge our diversity in district, not only at a point in time, but if it's updated annually.
Sorry, I was writing it down. Mr. Walker.
So I want to riff off of Dan's suggestion about celebrating. I think that, I think the idea of recognizing the district's diversity, improving quality in programming, increasing diversity in staffing is all really great. I think the way to enhance this district goal would be to say something along the end, celebrating our overall community, and just highlighting the level of diversity of the Bloomfield community as a whole. So again, I'm not wordsmithing this, but I hope that, Charlene, that that's helpful, because I do think, I do think it's about the community as much as it is about our differences. So we'll make sure we hit that.
Mr. Berger.
I cannot believe I made it all the way through without anybody suggesting the heritage calendar. This needs to go in Sal's thing, and we want to work on a heritage calendar, because we understand, Charlene, President Fishman, that downstream from diversity is heritage. And we dig into the heritage, and we find out what's going on, we broadcast it out, just like Dan said, we commoditize it. Heritage calendar, thank you very much.
I just have a question. So are we adding tasks to these goals?
Are you adding, sorry?
Task, like he was saying?
No, that's his job, is to come up with the action plan.
Oh, so that would be a task for Sal.
That's him. We're suggesting what we want as board, and then it's their job to do district action plan to make it happen. We could give suggestions along the way, but...
Calendar, let's go.
Calendar. Ms. Morse, I didn't forget you, go ahead.
Thank you. I like the way it is, I think celebrating is a good addition, but we're, seems like we're doing, we're on the path to achieving these goals, so let's keep them and keep going down the path. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Great. Okay, and the next one was your community and communication goal, to develop communication platforms that foster transparent and constructive dialogue that will support positive community and parental engagement.
You want to start with that one? Is that what you're trying to do?
Boy, did we have a year of community engagement here on this Board of Education. We not only caught the touchdown, but we spiked the football. Charlene, so much better than you've ever seen we did in community engagement, because we have a chairman, Mr. Morse, and we have nine board members that are very connected to our community. Let's keep doing what we're doing. We're very effectively using our community engagement committee with the leadership, President Fishman, Vice President Walker. I think we should continue on this path.
Mr. Morse.
Thank you. I would add, we could do better with our, and we sort of addressed this, but with inter-board communication. Just, it sometimes feels like you don't hear anything from a board member, or you don't feel like you're on the board, because you don't hear anything going on. So if there's any way we can just, I don't know if it's a central, I'm not really sure the details, but it would be nice to hear progress on different things as they're going, rather than having to wait for meetings.
Thank you, Ms. Green.
I think that we did do a great job this year in terms of community engagement, and I think we should definitely continue down that path.
Ms. Dudley.
I'm all about the community. I think this has, from being a parent in the district to now being on the board, there definitely has been a significant increase of community engagement. So that's a good change. I think that we are, we have a good opportunity to use other avenues and outlets to engage the community, which we have done. And I think that we should continue on. It's been a great platform, and people have now been more comfortable, I think, through this avenue of communication to address the board with some of the ideas and new things that they want to see, not only within the community, within the district. So this is, this is great, I'm all for it. I like it a lot.
Okay, thank you.
She led the charge. We have a rock star status over here in that woman. Mrs. Salinas.
Thank you, President Fishman, I think this goal is great. There is, from the past years, there is more community engagement, which I'm really, really happy to see, and for myself to be involved in as well. I love this community, I love where this community is going, and the parents, the pastors that have been sitting on board have really become engaged, which makes, I think we are, for us, I think we are also doing a great job. So I think we should just continue with this goal.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
That's great, I don't have anything to add to that.
Mr. Heller. David? Mr. Walker.
I like this goal quite a bit. I just want to highlight that I think that while we've done a good job in the past year facing the pandemic, I think that the way that our community communicates has changed dramatically. And I think that it's to the administration's credit in terms of using surveys, using Google Meet, using Zoom, using different platforms, that we've been really agile in that. But I think that we also need to continue to double down on this, because I think, I see it with my kids, and I see it in my workplace, that the way people are communicating has expanded exponentially. And so while we're better in a lot of places, we may not be better across the board. And I think we have to meet the community where they're at. So I'm not sure, I realize that that doesn't necessarily fit neatly into this goal, but I just want to recognize that while we've done a lot of good work under this goal, I think there's a lot of work to be done, not because of lack of effort, but because of the changes that have happened in our community and in our society.
I agree, but I just want to say that all of these goals, and any goals that we ever put up there are because the work is never done. Once we hit one achievement, we raise the bar, and now we work to that one. We are not complacent on this board. That's something that we have strived to maintain over the past few years, is to meet one goal, and then raise the bar and go to the next one. So the work is never done, never done.
Great. And then the last one was about your staff, to make sure that we attract and retain the best and brightest staff to reflect our diverse community. And that's where last year, that profile of a teacher that was just mentioned a little bit ago, that we, last year, we had kind of put that same thought in this goal, or as the suggestion for this goal. So just wanted to bring that up, so.
Mr. Morse, I go to you first. I just like the sound effects that we're getting here, too, by the way.
Who did you say first?
Ben is going to go first.
I think I'm good on this one, thank you. We should keep it, I'm good with keeping it. It's, I think, attracting the best and the brightest here is what we have to do if we're going to improve what we offer to students and the community. So let's continue on that.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Berger.
Keep it the same, please.
Mr. Walker.
No comment on this one.
Mr. Heller. Good. Mr. Anderson.
The only thing I would question is the wording of, instead of to reflect, maybe best and brightest staff, that reflects our diverse community, harkening back to what we said in number three. But, and then also, I don't know if it gets too much, but to say, but to attract, retain the best and brightest staff that is committed to whatever we said in number one, that reflects our diverse community. Because I think it's important in the hiring process when we're looking for, is to bring up what we want to see in the teachers.
Good point, Dan, thank you. Mrs. Salinas.
No, President Fishman, it's perfect the way it is.
Ms. Dudley.
I agree with Dan, so thank you for not letting me have to explain it. So I appreciate that.
Dan's doing work over there, man. Mrs. Green.
I definitely agree with Dan, and definitely adding a commitment to the district's mission as well. But I like it.
Well, that's a good one, I like that. I can't really see you down there, but I like it. You're very far away. I know. What else, what else do you need from us?
So just wanted to, you know, so we're keeping these five goals, and typically, that would be as many as we would have. Always open it up to see if anyone has any other priorities they think there should be in addition to these. Like I said, I would suggest we go more than five. So if anyone did have anything more, it would have to be, the group would have to agree, that would have to be in replacement of one of these.
I think we like the five that we have. I'm going to let Mr. Heller talk one second. I think that we just were changing our focuses, but let Mr. Heller add his comment real quick.
I like the five, but of course, we just did all this work on the board side, and the administration was very silent. Is there anything that we're overlooking, dear fellow administrators, initiatives that should be your district goals and not necessarily driven by the board, as we just did?
Mike, I think the board did a really good job of kind of encapsulating the things that we want to work on as a group in terms of the administration. that we want to work on as a group in terms of the administration. Now, Joe, can you think of anything? I think they've been, I think it's a very, very good group of ideas that you put forward in terms of adding to these, being inclusive in these five district goals. We're totally in agreement of what's been said tonight, what we have here, and the continuing work that we have to do.
It's funny because we talked about this in anticipation of tonight, this past week with everything else going on. One thing that we did touch upon was what Ralph brought up in regards to different ways we could possibly reach the community. We've heard loud and clear in the past from the board and the public, you know, how can we reach out to the community? And we implemented many different surveys. In my opinion, we've really built out our social media platform and tried to reach as many people as possible, but that's one of the topics we discussed, is how could we reach even more people and have them more informed on a daily basis and not just when big issues or big items come about? How can we make sure they have all the necessary information continuously and not just sporadically when it comes to these situations? So, I would agree with Mr. Goncalves in regards that I think these goals, to maintain them, to shift the focus a little bit, as President Fishman said, would be adequate for this school year.
Mr. Tottoli.
Well, I don't share the same hierarchical status of Mr. Flores or Mr. Goncalves. I slightly disagree primarily because I think it's just premature. I guess I defer to Charlene, whether the intermingling of what is the board priorities here with administrative charges is correct, but I think my answer to that is the ongoing DEI initiatives and what's so inextricably linked to changing composite of our certified and non-certified staff in terms of DEI initiatives is a premature topic because those conversations and work sessions are ongoing. I have a few ideas, and I would think that if appropriate, I could send to Joe and Sal a few recommendations of how we could put that in as a placeholder, understanding that the DEI committee is amidst its work, but I don't have those committed to language at the moment. And if they're appropriate, I'll take that charge in first draft.
We won't hold you accountable for that tonight, it's been a long night, so we can do that at another time.
I guess the question to Charlene, and I don't know the appropriateness, and then I'll silence the microphone. Is it appropriate, Charlene, for the administration to include within the four corners of this document, charges that the administrators are squarely responsible for, although the board is oversight in terms of recruitment initiatives?
So, I mean, the intent from the board's perspective or with this goal would be that the board is identifying priorities. So, we're basically saying that, you know, like saying in this case of the last goal with the staff resources, saying that, you know, that the attraction and retention of staff that reflects the diverse community, so that's a priority. And then how you, as the administration, look at that, carry it out, you know, that is the administration's responsibility of her view. So, the board is just kind of identifying what's a priority to the administration, and then we'll hold you accountable for telling the board how you, you know, how you're going to accomplish that priority.
So, we're giving you the top part, and now you have to make the roadmap.
Yes.
Vicky, you got something?
Okay, so, of course, as a BA, my thing is always in terms of financial prioritizing the district's goal and how to utilize our limited financial resources to achieve those goals. And I think as we talked about earlier, in terms of creating a safe, healthy, and secure learning environment, and how do we prioritize, you know, how do we use our limited resources to, you know, to reach those goals? I think we talked about adding, I think Charlene is helping us to add those words into it. And I think also in terms of the, you know, this board has a lot of new ideas, we're always on the go to try to do what's more for the community, for the students. So, I think we have a lot of, I use the word, competing projects. How do we work as a team to try to make, you know, that prioritize that and see what's the, you know, most beneficial to our community at, you know, particular year? So, I think that would be something we wanted to focusing on. So, I think...
I think that's a great plan. Do you want a round of applause so that Joe gets?
No, no, no.
I just want to do that for Joe.
I'm mad with this kind of stuff, sorry.
You got to be kidding me for that.
Charlene, Joe gets very upset when we clap for Vicky, so we just like to do it for fun.
That was a weak clap, too.
I'm getting me on this.
So, are we all set, Charlene? Is there anything else that we need to do?
So, that was it for the district goals. This is just a sample of what an action plan pamphlet might look like. So, again, that's where those success indicators would be. So, now, from the board's perspective, saying what are the things that we would like to focus on? The board had completed its board self-evaluation this year, or in June, so I don't know if you've had that discussion about the document, but I just wanted to show you because I was so proud of you. When I looked at, you can see, went up in almost every area, but particularly in board performance. So, as we look at the work of the board, just wanted to, you know, acknowledge the great work that you are doing as a group.
You guys, we went up in the middle of a pandemic.
And then we have your board goals from last year, and so just wanted to, again, look at those and see if those would continue to be the priority for the board. And last year, you had a training goal that looked at both, you know, you as individuals getting training, then also the board continuing to work toward, you know, earning master board certification. So, the board to, just to kind of give you the progress on that. So, you would need to have 10 credits, and one hour of training equals one credit over, you know, two years from when you earned the board certification, which was May of 2020. So, by May of 2022, you would need 10 credits. As of before tonight, you have three, so this will, you know, make at least a fourth. So, the board would, you know, to continue with this, would need to have six more hours of training between now and next week.
So, we'll be seeing you a lot.
This would be a lot more, this would be a lot easier if we were going to Atlantic City for our conference.
Yeah. So, we'll be seeing you a lot in the near future so that we can meet that goal. I know all of us on the individual level have been working very hard, but this is something that we as a board want the public to know, that we take this very seriously, the nine of us. It's not just what you see in the meetings, it's us doing training and learning new things and looking at it from different lenses and things like that. So, thank you for showing us that, thank you for showing us that bar graph. I think it's extraordinary that everything has gone up, especially with everything that we have been through over the past year. So, to my fellow board members, thank you from the bottom of my heart for doing all the work that you do on behalf of our staff and students. Sometimes, thank you is not enough, and I think that this is a thankless job. So, I'm going to say thank you. Say again? This is a thankless job? Yes. So, thank you. Thank you, Charlene.
Sure. So, are we going to keep the training goal, then?
Yes.
Yep. And the fiscal responsibility, we've talked about the importance of that, right?
Yes.
And looking at it, you know, we'd mentioned from a long-term perspective as well and keeping an eye on the priorities. We talked about the importance of communication, right, and engagement with the community. And then last time, the board also had to schedule board work sessions for topical discussions. So, again, that would be another way of engaging the community, so just wanted to confirm then that we are continuing with all of these.
Mr. Heller wants to say something.
I think number four is particularly important. Not only is it the opportunity to have a conversation without action with the community, but also addresses what Mr. Morris talked about earlier, the idea that all board members are on the same page, on the same level playing field, that we all have equal knowledge of the kinds of things that we're thinking about, whether individually or collectively within our small standing committees, so that we're all on the same page. So, I, in fact, I would almost say that number four maybe needs to live in number two's spot. Number two, we're doing really quite well, and maybe it lives as board goal number four, the two swap.
So, I appreciate Mr. Heller's comment, but I'm going to wholeheartedly disagree. I honestly think that board goal number two certainly needs to be near the top, and I think the good work that we've done, to President Fishman's point before, we continue to raise the bar and we do a nice job, but the bar also continues to get raised on us with everything that's happened in the last two years. I think that the board moving forward is going to be more and more strained on fiscal responsibility in ways that we can't always predict. And as much as I like to, we've already given Vicky her round of applause for tonight, and I appreciate the work that she does, I think we have hard decisions ahead, and I don't think that we can push that down, per se. I think it actually needs more diligence, not less. The other point I wanted to make is that I do think, and I appreciate Jill's comment before about the fact that this is an underappreciated position, I do think that we have to also manage expectations in terms of time management. I know that for myself, and we've had these conversations before, the strain of combination of committee meetings, board meetings, out-of-board meetings, FSA responsibilities, additional responsibilities above and beyond, negotiations, you know, it layers on and on and on. And I do think that we need to have some reasonable expectations on all of this. So, I would make a request that we look at time management for board responsibilities and look for ways to streamline some of those responsibilities.
Can I add to Ralph's point is maybe not streamline, but spread them out, so you feel overworked, if I'm hearing correctly, but I feel underutilized. So, maybe there's a way, so when you have work to do, we should, I totally agree that it needs to be discussed, and maybe we can spread it out a little to just alleviate, you know, I don't want anybody to get burned out or anything, so let's try to work on that.
Mrs. Salinas, I got you, Dan. I heard your ding-ding, hold on one second.
Yeah, I agree with Michael's emphasis on number four. I think maybe we should just look at the four of them as not hierarchical, but just four equally important goals that we need to constantly be working on, but especially coming out of the, well, sort of coming out of this pandemic, to be able to have some more work sessions. There's a lot of topics that need to be discussed and talked about, and it's something that I think we need to focus on.
Thank you. Did you have something?
I just wanted to say that, you know...
Your mic's not on.
I'm sorry.
I forget that. I just wanted to say for, I understand what Ralph and Ben are saying, but I think to practice fiscal responsibility should stay at the top, it should stay at number two, because I think we've done a great job so far, so let's continue to do that. So, I don't think we should push that on the bottom.
I don't think that the number order is anything of importance in this. I think that they're 25% of each of importance. And whether you put number four at the top and number one at the bottom, they are equally important.
Okay.
So, I mean, we can go, and we can rearrange it and just pull them out of a hat, they're still equally important. I don't think that one is 36% and one is, you know, 10%. I think they're 25% each one, and I think that they deserve their due diligence on each topic.
Okay. No, okay, so then that's, leave it the way it is.
Dan?
Yeah, as I said, I don't think there's a hierarchy, it's just, there's four areas that are very important, and we need to address them equally.
Correct.
If not, a little more on number four.
Sorry, President Fishman, I probably just misunderstood.
No worries.
Okay, is that everyone's input then on the board goals?
I think so.
Okay, good. I'm going to stop sharing my screen then, and it looks like we did, you know, everything that we had, you know, hoped to do in terms of having a conversation on our goals and setting our priorities for the upcoming year here. So, as I said, I have been taking notes, and we'll put this all together, and then, you know, the board should formally adopt these goals, and, you know, you do a great job of, you know, including them on your website, including them on your agenda so that it's clear to everyone, you know, both of the staff, the community, what these priorities are. So, I wanted to thank you for your time, and unless anyone has any questions for me, I think that we have accomplished what we, you know, hope to do here tonight.
Thank you once again for coming to join us. We will be seeing you again in the future before May. We have to do, what, six hours? So, we'll be seeing you a lot in the next few months.
Okay.
Clear your schedule, please. You want to say something to Charlene?
I just want to say, Charlene, in the 11 years here, you know, through school boards that I have a lot of respect for, we never had a liaison, and I would write this, is Dr. Feinsaut still your ED?
Yes.
I will put this in an email. We have never had such a longstanding school board liaison. I'm not asking you for anything, this is a simple comment, but it's truthful. You are responsive via text message, you are responsive via email based on the frenetic environment and the impassioned thought that this school district engages in. Congratulations to them, their administration, the Board of Education. You make yourself readily available in such a way that makes all of our work so much easier. Your presentations are concise to the point, you do everything in your power over the past seven, eight years in your continued representation of school boards on behalf of Bloomfield to avail yourself as a true customer service professional, and if that's one of the charges of your organization, you carry it out with real mastery. And if I didn't have a chance to say it at some future point, I wanted to just add that tonight, and it's a real sincere comment, it's just a real pleasure working with you, and the consistency factor is really important, I think. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlene.
It's definitely my pleasure. I can honestly say that Bloomfield is one of my favorite places to come and one of my favorite boards to work with, so I truly appreciate the relationship.
Thank you, Charlene. You guys, it's time for everybody's favorite time.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.